Cut it muted on there, too. Thank you. Okay, just to let everybody here in the audience know, if you do want to speak on an item on the agenda, just to speed things up, so everybody gets an opportunity to speak, there is a sign in sheet there. If you can just get your, you know, put your name on there for us, so that we have that for the record, and that'll just help things go a little bit smoother. You'll have your opportunity to come and speak as each public hearing is opened. Okay?
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioners, please make sure your microphones are on. Jill, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Bond?
Here.
Commissioner Yekitis?
Here.
Commissioner Ott?
Here.
Chairman Hammond?
Here.
Commissioner Baum?
Here.
Commissioner McNeil James?
Here.
Vice Chairman Yen?
I'm here.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting of January 2nd, 2025. Vote for a motion.
A move review for minutes of January 7th, 2025.
A second.
Motion and second. Please call roll.
Sorry. Commissioner Bond?
Yes.
Commissioner Yekitis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ott?
Yes.
Chairman Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Baum?
Yes.
Commissioner McNeil James?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Yen?
Yes.
Thank you. This portion of the meeting, we open up for a public comment, for anything not on tonight's agenda. If it's on tonight's agenda, please wait until the item is called before the commission. So if you'd like to make a comment, please step up to the podium, state your name, and sign in, please. Anybody online?
Anybody online? Commissioner?
Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Six items for Planning and Zoning Commission Action. PZC 2024 DAS 011 Express Car Wash Northeast Corner of Orchard and Route 30.
Car Wash Pro Designers has submitted a petition. They'd like to build a car wash on the corner of Orchard and 30, the northeast corner. They would need to annex, rezone to B2 zoning, and also, they would require a variance to make that happen. The three parcels are approximately 1.8 acres, and includes the corner parcel, as well as two parcels north of that, along Brentwood. The two houses furthest to the west toward Orchard, both of which are currently unoccupied. They would, their site plan shows access from Brentwood, as well as 30. They don't currently have the access rights on 30. They would need approval from IDOT for that, as well as they would need to actually obtain the rights from the state legislature. IDOT did review a similar plan back in 2013, that included a fuel station as well, and the access was actually closer to Orchard than the one in the new site plan, and at that time, IDOT did not show any objection. Unfortunately, they're not able to acquire access from Oakton to the east, even though there's sort of a gravel or dirt path there that the county uses for maintenance, because they don't own all of the parcels along 30 there, so that would have to cut through county property. The comprehensive plan designates the subject property as regional business, so B2 is exactly what is called for there. The county currently has those, the parcels zoned F District farming, which is their default and typically residential, as well as B1. B1 would mean that a car wash is a special use there, but they're looking to annex for, you know, water and other benefits. There are some concerns that staff has about the proposal, specifically with regards to access on 30. We recommend that access on 30 is basically essential to this really working, and because of that, if we annex and rezone, and the access is not obtained, now all of a sudden, you have a lot of permitted uses on that corner that would not be required to get access on 30, even if the car wash doesn't happen. So, we're currently in talks with them to work out an annexation agreement. The current plan is that if the car wash is not developed within a certain time, and again, that's subject to our current negotiations, but if it is not developed within a certain amount of time, the property would automatically de-annex. And Attorney Julian can talk more about that in a little while. The petitioner also has requested a setback variance. In the B2 district, we actually have a corner side yard setback of 75 feet, meaning, that's a maximum setback, meaning that the building would have to be pushed closer to Orchard. It's not really feasible for a car wash in particular, and given the development along, you know, in that area, we don't think a variance is totally out of the question. They are proposing that the building would be slightly over 115 feet from Orchard. Staff can only recommend approval if that Route 30 access is approved. The engineer concurs, otherwise, they don't have an objection, but Chris Ott is here representing the engineers, and he can answer more questions about it, if you have any. The submitted photometric plan is compliant with the UDO, the preliminary landscape plan is also in conformance. We will need to make approval of the final landscape plan, so that's listed as a condition, but we don't see any issues there. It is basically good to go. And plans have been shared with the fire district, so we're recommending that final approval there also be made a condition. Conditions are going to be a little bit wonky here. They're listed as being, applying to the annexation, rezoning, and variation in the staff reports, but after thinking more about it, we're guessing that you guys are going to split the vote, so that there's one vote for the annexation and rezoning, and additional vote for the variance. And so, the listed, the listed conditions there would apply to the variation. So, they wouldn't need to be a part of the first vote. However, we would like to add a condition, which would be engineer approval for the plat of annexation, and then that would be an additional condition for the annexation and rezoning. Does that follow? Does anyone have questions about how those conditions would work?
The condition for the annexation would be...
Engineer approval?
Engineer.
Of the plat of annexation. And now, it's here for, you know, if anyone has any questions, but otherwise, for consideration.
Has there been any talk with IDOT about the widening of Route 30? And how that would impact this?
Yeah, but we haven't participated in any talks about the development with IDOT. I know the petitioner has, you know, IDOT, you know, performed a Phase 1 back in 2015, got approved in 2018, so there is plans, but as of right now, widening of Route 30 is not in their current five-year plan. There are improvements at Orchard and 30 to be made in the next five years, but unknown when that widening would actually take place at this point.
And that would be something that IDOT would be looking at as part of their review of this particular plan, as they're reviewing access.
And the petitioner is here to answer questions as well, if that's part of their discussion so far, or anything.
Sure. As of right now, I'll go through the findings of fact for the annexation. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. May go ahead and open up the public hearing. If you'd like to comment on this item before the commission, please step up to the podium, state your name, and sign in.
And this portion of the public hearing will be for the annexation and the rezoning upon annexation to the B2.
Okay, no comments. I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Move on to findings of fact. The proposed annexation is in compliance with state law. Response, the proposed annexation is in compliance with the state law. Two, the parcels proposed for annexation are contiguous to parcels located in the village. The 1.8 acre parcel is contiguous to the parcels in the south that are located within the village's corporate limits. Three, annexation conforms to all annexation or service extension policies of the village. The annexation will conform to the village's annexation and service extension policies. Four, the proposed public infrastructure and utilities are provided to the satisfaction of the village engineer, including water facilities, wastewater facilities, drainage facilities, streets, and transportation facilities. The proposed infrastructure is satisfactory to the village engineer, provided access to US Route 30 is obtained. Five, the proposed annexation supports any planned capital improvement policies. The proposed annexation supports capital improvement policies. Six, annexation supports the land use and development intensity and plan pace of growth in the village, as indicated in the comprehensive plan and other land use policies of the village. The annexation is in general compliance with the comprehensive plan or other land use policies of the village. Commissioners, any questions on the annexation finding of fact? If not, I will go move on to the rezoning. Okay. The petitioner is requesting rezoning the property from King County B1 Business, from Farming District, B2 Business District. One, the proposed amendment will not endanger the health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the public. Provided access from US 30 is approved, the proposed rezoning will not endanger the health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the public. Two, the proposed amendment is compatible with existing uses, character, and zoning of adjacent properties and other properties within immediate vicinity of the proposed amendment. The rezoning is generally compatible with existing uses and zoning in the immediate and, immediate south, and with the required screening will be compatible with adjacent residential uses provided access to Route 30 is obtained. Three, the proposed amendment provides relative gain to public as compared to any hardship imposed upon individual property owners. The proposed rezoning will allow the corner of a major intersection to be developed. Four, the proposed amendment addresses the community needs for a specific use. The rezoning allows for continued growth of Montgomery's commercial base and provide another option for residents on the west side of the village to patron. Five, the proposed amendment corrects an error, adds clarification to, or a policy change, not applicable. Six, the proposed amendment is consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan, this ordinance, other land use policy of the village. The rezoning is consistent with the village's comprehensive plan, which calls for the area to be utilized by regional car-based commercial uses. The rezoning is consistent with the intent of the UDO and other land use policies of the village. Commissioners, any questions, comments? Anything for the petitioner?
I have one question.
Hello, Nick Spillon with Car Wash Pro Designers.
You swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth?
I do. Thank you.
Did you have the opportunity, your corporation, have the opportunity to speak to any of the neighbors that would be surrounding in the background of your...
We didn't, but we did notify, based on the requirement, and if anybody had come forward, we definitely would have gone...
So, you notified, and no one...
No one came forward.
Okay. I think that was what I thought was most concerned about. The other is, your plans for your commercial hours?
So, typically, this business runs really well from dawn to dusk. You know, we follow that, depending upon the year. If you get, if you, when it gets dark out, or it's kind of dim out, you're starting to burn the candle at both sides. So, smartly, you open up when there's bright lights, and you close when the lights start to go down. So, we, you know, during the summertime, it's typically seven or eight in the morning until eight or nine at night. In the winter, it's eight or nine until five or six.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further comments or questions?
I have a question. And it concerns the access to 30. How close to that Orchard and 30 corner would that access be?
Three, that's 300 plus.
Close to 300 feet?
300 feet.
Or, give or take?
It's as far.
It's, it's as far as we could possibly push it, because of the taper coming in from the right in and right out.
Right.
So, we push it as far as we could to the lot line, to allow us to be as far away from the light as we can.
Okay.
Does that, does that eat into the turn lane, or is it before and after it?
So, we would actually be improving the space by adding the right turn lane. So, when you mentioned earlier about the improvements to that area, we anticipated those improvements. They actually shared those with us.
Okay. So, in reference to, like, across the street, like, just so visually, so I can see, is it, like, east of Stricklands, or? Like, before the Burger King?
Do you actually have the physical site plan in front of you, or no?
I, I do, but I also have the map up, too, at the corner, so. So, I was just trying to see what, you know, landmark-wise, I think we can visualize it better, if we know what it's equivalent to, across the street.
I think the bank is right across the street.
The bank's right across the street, but then, I think it goes a little bit farther, right? So, I don't know if it's Stricklands, or east or west of Stricklands?
It would line up with that secondary building by Stricklands, not the, so the one to the east.
The one to the east, okay. All right, thank you.
One note I'd like to add, and I know it hasn't been asked yet, is, what kind of sets this project apart from, from other washes? There's only three buildings in Illinois that have actually built a conveyorized belt system, which is common. By the way, you either have the track where you put your one wheel on a track, or it's like a belt at the airport where a car goes on, and you're kind of walking on it. Very common, so this will have the belt. But this will be a, an optional touchless wash. It's, there's only three in the state of Illinois. It's, it's becoming a very common thing where EV vehicles, vehicles that are getting wrapped, vehicles that have the clear coat removal on them, which is becoming very common, are seeking touchless options, and we're placing these strategically throughout Illinois. So, we're noticing, we used to have washes where, you know, you place a wash, our thought is, your customer base is three miles from that, that point of center. We're actually bringing people 20 or 30 miles in to reach a touchless wash, because they just simply don't have them for this type of, for this type of wash. So, this is going to be very unique for this area.
Did you say your hours were dawn to dusk, roughly, or?
Yes.
That gives me some concern. Dawn's pretty early, and...
So, the earliest we ever see a wash open is 7:00 AM, and the latest we see it close is 9:00. And this is summertime hours. In the wintertime hours, it's typically 8:00 to 6:00.
Could that be shortened?
Absolutely.
Because, you know, we don't want to wake up the neighbors, so 7 o'clock's pretty early.
So, I will say that another advantage of this building is it's equipped with something called the stealth system, and if we had known that, that sound would be an issue, or even lights would be an issue, one of the things that Tony mentioned is our photometric plan shows zero foot candles at the lot lines. But as far as sound goes, we recently took this building, and not only took a sound study, which, by the way, I've seen about 10 of these, you know, in the last six months, can't read half of them, but we did a video demonstration of this exact facility that we have running in Aurora, Illinois. And when you're 30 or 40 feet from this building, you hear nothing. It's completely silent.
But could your hours...
Also have them oriented, so that those mechanical rooms are facing Route 30, as opposed to towards the residences.
I saw that. Could your hours of operation be mandated somehow, that they're not too early or too late?
We, we have no objection. If it's, if it's, the light is going down, or there is no light, we have zero problem being closed. And we have no problem having a fix to that.
And you said your lights do, this, there's no glare out at all?
As far as, as far as our own lighting, the foot candles are zero at the lot lines, are very minimal, if anything, at the lot lines. When it comes to, when it comes to sound, and, you know, I got a very good recent education on this, our building from 30 feet away, that's off 50 decibels. And the traffic from the roads itself are somewhere hovering around 65. And for every 10 decibels, it's twice the sound to the human ear. So, our building lets off, if there were 50 people in this room, all having a loud conversation, and somebody was whispering, you would never hear the whisperer. So, it's, it's a very unique building. We're very green-friendly, we're all about, we don't actually have soaps or chemicals. We use bio deratable solutions. We actually use marine solutions, so it's fish-friendly, it's marine-friendly. We're very, we have a big green footprint.
Would you be open to a minimum of 8:00 AM opening time?
I have no problem with that. That's, that's, that's typical.
Okay.
My, my major thing is, is how long does it take to get these cars through?
So...
I mean, I see busy, you know, busyness on every single car wash that comes through. I, I think this is a, an area that would be very busy.
I agree.
It seems very clustered, if 30's right there, with people trying to figure out if they're going to turn left and do vacuums, and turn, keep right into the lane. Are you having people direct that traffic? I mean...
So, we do have 12 employees. Some of them are directing traffic. We do have a ton of stacking on the site, because of the size of the site. I will tell you, from, from the car that pulls up to the pay station itself, it's a three-minute transaction before they exit the building, and then a vehicle is leaving every 20 seconds after that. So, it's three minutes for the first vehicle, and every vehicle behind that comes out every 20 seconds. So, if you're 20 feet back in line, you're probably out of that building in less than 15 minutes.
Yeah.
And three lanes wide.
Yeah, my, I mean, my major thing is, is that that 30 is, is a very busy intersection, 30 and Orchard, with cars coming out every 20 seconds, if they're coming out on 30, and then cars are coming in on 30. I, I mean, I could see that backup being a lot, causing accidents or, or anything, so.
Before we even get into the heavy part of the building, where there's, we're almost at 32 cars of stacking. There's a ton of laneage that we're not even anticipating. If you look at Sheet 2, we have 32 cars before you enter the building itself. There's a, there is a lot of stacking on the site. This is, we're only demonstrating just what would be in just the queue lanes themselves, but if you were to actually take everything that was in the site itself, you could probably put close to 40 or 50 cars without a problem.
We did receive a site plan showing the stacking spaces in use. Engineer Ott has it pulled up right now, if you do need to see it.
We did have KLOA look at this, too, to, to kind of dictate how we should lay the site out. We, we rely a lot on them, and there were a lot of alterations made to the site from KLOA's suggestions.
And Brentwood would stay a right turn only, correct? It wouldn't be a light to make a turn left onto Orchard? I can't remember if that...
Yeah, correct. Brentwood would remain right in, right out onto Orchard.
When you refer to stacking, does it just go around, like, just pass the exit to the Route 30 entrance area, area?
So, we're showing stacking unimpeded, but, I mean, literally, the entire site is considered stacking. We just don't show it.
Right, but what, you know, cars are probably coming from 30, so if they start turning in there, and it gets, you know, if there's a long line, they could, they can line out outside of 30?
That's why we have, I mean, keep in mind that we're also including a long deceler, deceleration right turn lane, a very long one.
Okay.
I think close to 400 feet.
Okay, so you're adding to that.
I mean, it would, if we hit that, we're talking about, you may not see this client again, because he's probably buying a yacht and going to the Virgin Islands and retiring. I mean, that would be the moon, stars, it would never, we just, we have never seen something like, this is a lot of stacking for a site.
Yeah, so, so based on the, the stacking exhibit that they have, you know, they can fit about 40 cars on the north side of the proposed car wash, before they even start to wrap around the building and affect, like, the access off of Route 30, based on what they, what they show here.
And keep in mind, we're producing a car every 20 seconds.
And then, for the, for the vacuums on the south side of the building, are the, are the vacuums themselves, the machines, like, enclosed somewhere, or is it going to be loud as well?
So, if you're looking at the ones that are, that are away from the building, there's an enclosure that's to the left of that, and the actual vacuum system, it's a central vac.
Okay.
It's, it's enclosed in a, in a, in a masonry enclosure that matches the building itself. So, the only thing that you do hear, when, if anything, is when you pull the actual hose off of the, the cradle, you'll hear a "hoo". But that, I mean, that, someone would have to just stand there. The intention of that vacuum is to go inside and actually be inside a car and use it, but if somebody stuck it out and held it out loud, or held it out, you, that's the, the noise you would hear, is that, that suction noise.
So, when you were talking about the noise level, you're including that as well?
Everything. We, we include all of that area.
Okay.
Is that vacuum only accessible if you get a car wash?
It's free to everybody. So, you, you know, we, we used to have it, I know Fuller's down the street has it designed, where you have to wash in order to use the vacuum. We did a controlled, a controlled survey, and we found out there's a lot of people that intend to do both. They come to the wash, and they'll, they'll wash, and maybe the line's a little longer than they expected, and they only had 15 minutes, and then they'll leave, and then come back to vacuum, or vice versa. They'll vacuum, realize they ran out of time, leave, and then come back for the wash. So, it's better to just leave it free regardless. You don't have to get the wash to use the vax.
Where's your location in Aurora, you mentioned?
It's on... Across from, what, what's the road that the casino is going on?
Farms Park.
Yeah. It's, it's across from the Walmart.
Oh, okay.
The Walmart, directly across the street from the Walmart.
Their Butterfield Road, and Farms.
And it's, it's actually the exact same facility.
I think I've seen that, actually.
Thank you.
And we are, and that facility uniquely is built directly next to a whole row of homes, and... homes. And it's a very quiet building. It's, 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 so if you're looking, if you're looking from a satellite view, you got the Walmart to the left, you have our facility across the street, and there's a huge home development to the right of that.
How long have you been there?
Pardon?
How long have you had that, um, car wash?
That client has owned that wash for two years. And they're building a second one in Aurora now as well, that was just recently approved.
Time enough to have complaints if there was sound.
You know, if, if the mayor would never allow, I think that was the mayor that was running for mayor of Chicago. And he probably would never allow number two if he had problems with number one. And that one's on Gary. Or what is it? It's on, uh, the new one's on?
Eola.
Eola and what? Just off of Eola.
Another car wash there?
Just same exact version. Second one in Aurora.
On New York Street?
What is it? Eola and what?
Is it, is the one on Kirk Road, that Mr. Bubbles?
Kirk, Kirk, yes. Mr. Bubbles.
Yeah, alright.
That's it. And that's exactly the same building we're putting up.
Okay.
Same equipment, same, same everything.
So this one also be called Mr. Bubbles, or is that the-
This one, he hasn't quite decided yet, but every operator is separate. Um, this is the actual owner and his wife. Um, both of them will be the operators.
Okay, thanks.
Now, this might not be a question for you, but what, what would deter cut through, cut through traffic? Because, uh, you know, that corner gets busy, right? And, you know, hey, this might look faster. Make that right turn. Probably nothing, but it's, you know, is it advantageous probably?
I don't know that there's anything that would deter it other than, you know, you gotta go past the car wash, go in, get to Brentwood, turn left on Brentwood, turn, turn right. I'm not sure how much quicker that it would be. Um, so I'm not sure how much cut, cut through traffic you actually would even get.
Back to Mildred's question when we began, um, I'm just surprised the neighbors haven't called, or-
No.
Letters did go out and-
I mean, unless Anthony heard something.
Yeah, we, we have receipts. Uh, the, the letters were mailed. We did not get any calls either.
How many letters and round numbers? Oh, 10, 20, 30?
Uh, I can look it up.
Oh, no, just roughly. Is it a bunch?
Yeah, it was a bunch, because it's, there's a lot of residences, the north and to the east there. Yeah. Because it's, it's every property that has any amount of parcel within 250 feet.
I'm just baffled. The next door neighbor or the neighbor across the street's not here tonight. I-
To be honest, we are too. It's very common. Um, we built one in Algonquin, Illinois recently in a retirement community, and literally 400 people showed up. And we heard, actually, everyone heard from all 400 of them, three minutes of it. And everyone was against it. We built the wash. It was actually just nominated, if you go to the Algonquin, uh, Facebook page, it were just nominated, this building was nominated as Algonquin's Architectural Building of the Year. And I think we got almost every single one of those, um, uh, neighbors to be a client, except for just a few that really dug their feet in. And I think they just feel guilty coming in because they just really dug their feet in. But most of them became, you know, clients.
Thanks.
But yeah, this is very unique. And-
Yeah, I was surprised too.
Yeah, but up against the residential, we usually get a handful.
Yeah.
Yeah, I counted 18.
18 letters roughly went out?
Okay. I, um, also, I, I, I think I've mentioned this perhaps, but the signs that were there really, I don't think were adequate, uh, unless I missed some. They were just the metal stakes. There was one on Orchard, and the other one, I think blew down, a little one.
Okay. We don't, we don't actually have size requirements that they are required to meet. We have recommended sizes. Um, to my knowledge, that you went with the recommended size.
Yep.
But the other developments recently, there's a big, was it, I don't know, it's four by six, but, you know, it says proposed, they're big signs on metal stakes, you know, and-
We, we put up whatever we were asked to put up.
But you, you were the one that put, put the signs up, or?
We had, well, what we did is we found a local sign company. We sent them what was sent to us, and they created the sign and installed it.
Were there more than two metal leg signs?
Um, I think we've provided the photos.
Right. I believe there was one on, so there, there are, this parcel, uh, these parcels are along three different streets. So there was one on 30, one on Orchard, and one on Brentwood.
I know it was on the residential side and on to two main road sides.
As far as the, um, actual car wash sign, what size are we looking at there? Because it's, it's situ, it's, it's proposed to be on the corner. The actual sign for the car wash?
The ground sign?
Thank you, pardon?
Like the monument sign?
Yes, the monument sign. Sorry, you guys. The monument sign. Because it is on, situated kind of on the corner.
Yeah, the, the signage is all preliminary at this point and is, has not been, uh, approved. Um, once they actually apply for permits and things like that, then we'll take a closer look at size and things like that. Yeah.
We, yes, we did put an arbitrary place for it, but whenever we go through the permit phase, the sign company meets with the city. We're actually using Aurora Sign. They meet with the city, they talk about what's allowed, and then we bring it back to the client, what are you willing to spend? And then he kind of handpicks what, what-
Okay.
From there.
So, um, how about market saturation? I mean, you're aware of, I mean, I know you're all aware of all the car washes on Orchard Road. Um, you know, what's, what's to say? I, I guess you, I know you wouldn't do this unless you thought you'd be successful. I, I get that, but, you know, how many-
I just want to remind the kitchen, this isn't a special use.
Oh, it's not a special use?
No, this is, yeah, so we're going a little more into if this is a special use, but this isn't a special use. Right now, we're just looking at the annexation and the rezoning, and then there'll be a variation that we're going to discuss later.
I, I will answer that though, if you want. So we do look at that. We look very close to that. If somebody offered the same type of services we had, then we probably would be a million, a, a mile and a half or plus away. But we can service vehicles that Fuller's cannot. He cannot do doilies. He cannot do vehicles that are higher, are lower than three and a half inches because of the rail system. He can't do any vehicles that have wide tires, like the, every, every child today, I don't know how parents afford it, but every child today has a Jeep. Can't put Jeeps on these things. Can't put big pickups on them. So we're able to tailor to vehicles that that wash cannot. And then we're also offering the touchless piece, which that wash does not. So if Fuller's had offered that, all of those pieces, we would not be in this spot. And in order for Fuller's to actually do this, he'd have to rip the entire tunnel out, redo everything, which would be two-plus million dollars. We just don't see anybody doing that.
Thank you. There's no further questions or comments from the commissioners? I'll look for-
I'm curious, uh, you said touchless. Will they all be touchless, or will it be an option?
It'll be an option. So if you chose to, and, and Aurora, Mr. Bubbles is actually a really good example. If you do decide after this meeting to actually take a trip there, and you chose, it has the brushes, and you have the screens that make you choose what option you want. But if you choose touchless, all the equipment moves out of the way. And just high, soaps, conditioners, high pressure water, and air are the only things that touch the vehicle.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion on, um, annexation and rezoning, um, with the condition of the village receiving final plat. Approval by the village engineer.
Alright. I'll motion to approve PZC 2024 dash, I can't read my handwriting, 011. Yeah, okay. Um, annexation rezoning, car wash pro designers, with the, uh, following condition of village engineer approval of the final engineering plans.
Final plat.
Oh, final plat plans.
And the engineering group?
That's, yeah, that's-
Yeah, okay.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Also the 8 o'clock start time?
That's not something that would be a condition to an annexation or rezoning, but we can raise that with the board in the annexation agreement.
Thank you.
I make a second.
I have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Vice Chairman Yan?
Yes.
Commissioner Bond?
Yes.
Commissioner Yocitis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ott?
Yes.
Chairman Hammond?
Yes.
Chairman Baum?
Yes.
Commissioner McNeil James?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to part two, uh, consideration of variation of section 119. Um, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. If you'd like to make a comment on this item or a comment on this item, please step up to the podium, state your name, and sign in, please.
Uh, we do have a, a resident here, a neighbor, but, uh, as of right now, I believe they're just looking for information.
If there's no-
Well, yes, for the benefit of the resident, would you mind quickly going through what the request is, just so he's aware? Thank you.
So the petitioner is currently proposing a car wash on the northeast corner there of Orchard and 30. Um, the car wash would extend all the way up to Brentwood. We are requiring, um, that, as a condition, that it would only be able to go through if, uh, they are able to, uh, get access off of 30 in addition to Brentwood, so that it's not, you know, all the traffic coming in on Brentwood like that. Um, and then that's, like, if you have questions about it, we're, you know, we're happy to give you the information now before the vote's taken.
You mind stepping up to the podium? I need you to state your name and sign in, please? Come on up. That's okay. Uh, I need you to sign your name in, so we can have it for the record, please? You're up at the podium, and there's a microphone right there for you. Okay, do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Jaime Albor. Um, I live in 2318 Brentwood, uh, just behind, I just, you know, my, my house is gonna be behind, uh, the car wash is gonna be behind my house. So I'm a big concern, you know, for, um, especially for the traffic. Right now, we're, we're trapped in, in, you know, in that little area with only, you know, one, one way to the right, and then the other exit is only, you know, for both sides. That is, that is my concern. Traffic and, uh, uh, it is, is, is gonna be right behind my, my, my house. It's all, you know, I'm here for, uh, to hear, you know, uh, more information about it.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Were you, were you concerned about noise?
Yes.
Or were you concerned about t- and/or traffic?
Noise is one of the concerns, and another thing, uh, you know, since it's gonna be, um, behind my house, it's gonna be, uh, privacy, maybe, you know, less privacy for my, me and my family.
Sure. So, uh, as part of the plan, they are required to have a continuous, uh, landscape screening, um, between the car wash and the residential areas. That's gonna include evergreen trees as well as a continuous hedge, so that there's going to be essentially like a plant wall, once, as those grow in. Um, so that there's, you know, screening, and those houses can still have privacy and things like that.
Okay.
And hopefully it'll block a, a little bit of the noise as well.
Is that more in your concern in terms of your backyard and privacy?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Yes, and, uh, and, you know, mostly the traffic going through our little area is another question.
And traffic pattern?
Uh, according to the map that we received to the plan, it's gonna go out to, straight to Brentwood. So my house is, is the second house from the exit, uh, that is in the plan.
Ah, your, your house is second from the exit of the car wash?
Yeah, from, from the plan that is, uh, presented.
Gotcha.
So that's why I'm here.
Right.
Okay, so, just to kind of go over the access a little bit, um, Nick, would you mind kind of walking through the options on how people can get out of there? And if there's more distribution, expect it to happen out onto 30 versus Brentwood?
Where's Brentwood here?
It's the fourth house in.
So, yeah.
Right, but-
Yeah.
That's the fourth house in now, so.
I'm here. Yeah, here. No, I'm, um, yeah. So it's gonna be removed. And then my neighbor, and then me. So traffic is gonna be here, uh, for, you know, maybe noise or- Privacy.
So I just spoke with the client, and he's willing to, um, include privacy fencing to separate any of the residential area. So there can be a privacy fence, a board on board, which means not one of these, one of these. And whatever height that the town allows, uh, he'll be willing to put in. I just asked him, he's okay with that being a stipulation.
Okay. And then, um, this, uh-
That would be in addition to the landscaping?
Yes.
They do appear to have space in the site plan to accommodate a fence.
And this is gonna be a, a double way for, um, Bradley, Bradley Drive, right? So I'm afraid, um, some, uh, cars are gonna use this, this way. I, I, I have a, usually I drive, uh, uh, my truck with a trailer every day in summer, so my only way out is the one in, in this side, in the north side. And it's really hard for me to turn in there. And then usually, right now, we have, sometimes we have line waiting for, to turn, uh, left, because it's only a left turn that we have. And with, with, you know, with the traffic coming this way, it's gonna, it's gonna flow, you know, it's gonna be big. Uh, you know, for, for my, for me. And I don't know, maybe for more neighbors.
So, I mean, we did have KLOA look at this, and those possi, in fact, one of the things that they looked at is the, um, concern that one of the commissioners raised about the driving through the lot as well. But they did also address that.
Yeah, so, based on the, the traffic study and what was put together, there are gonna be some cars that probably do leave, um, off Brentwood to the right, go down Bradley to get to Countryside, because they want to head back, um, potentially to the, to the south. But I do believe, and based on the, the, the study, that the majority of traffic will go back out to Route 30, or they will turn left onto Brentwood and head north on Orchard, uh, which would not impact, uh, your property. So while yes, there will be an increase in traffic, um, based on the study, it's anywhere from 10 to 20 cars, uh, at the peak hour. So, um, that's why one of the requirements of what we're requiring is that they get that access off of Route 30, because we do have concerns if that access was not there, uh, the majority of the traffic would then be going down Bradley instead. So that's why, um, staff is recommending approval only if they're able to get that access onto Route 30.
Okay.
To try and alleviate those concerns.
Yeah, because there was, uh, plans for another exit, but that never happened. Uh, I think that was last, last year we talked about.
Uh, no, that's, that's still, uh, the village is still, um, you know, moving forward, you know, separate project that we're talking about. But yes, the village is still looking to move forward with doing the, the Mulberry Drive extension and providing a secondary access-
Yeah.
Uh, exit for that subdivision.
Right now, it's, it's, there is, there is the more issue that we have because, you know, we have not that much access to, to, you know, to get out.
Yep, understood.
We need, you know, we need more, more, more exits, less traffic, you know?
Village recognizes that, which is why they want to move forward with that, that plan to provide an access out to Auka, which would provide you to get onto Orchard and turn left at a signal as opposed to unsignalized at Countryside.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further comments, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Go through the findings effect. One, the proposed variation will not endanger the health, safety, comfort, convenience- the health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the public. It's the petitioner's opinion that a proposed variation will not endanger the health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the public. Staff concurs with the petitioner. The variation will not endanger health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the public, provided access to Route 30 is obtained.
Sorry, we did, we do have one person raising their hand.
Oh.
Just kinda jumped ahead. All right. Chris, you're free to talk. If you, you're currently muted?
I will reopen the public hearing.
Okay, they did, they did make a written comment. They asked, can you please close Brentwood Avenue, make it a cul-de-sac? We are getting the Mulberry extension soon. The traffic is getting out of hand on Brentwood Avenue. Can you please close Brentwood? This is from a resident on Brentwood.
Different topic, though.
It is, yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not the decision that you guys are making today.
Is, does Chris wanna speak? Because I see he's on mute.
That, he typed a message.
Okay.
I, I offered him the opportunity to speak, and he is still muted.
So, the answer for him would be that's being taken up at a later date?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
So, the response for him would be that that's taken up, will be taken up at a later date? Or something like that?
We can mention in our report to the village board that concerns about Brentwood Avenue's vehicle load were brought up at the meeting. But again, that would be a separate action by the village board that they would have to make related to Brentwood Avenue. I don't necessarily know that we have a traffic report that supports that at this time, but it's certainly something that we can keep an eye on moving forward.
Okay, once again, I will close the public hearing. Move on to number two.
Okay.
Of the findings of fact. The proposed variation is compatible with the character of adjacent properties and other properties within immediate vicinity of the proposed variation. The petitioner will provide screening and high-quality architectural design that will make for a nice fit to the village scheme. Staff believes the proposed site plan is laid out in a way that is compatible with the intent of the B2 district. Three, the proposed variation alleviates an undue hardship created by the literal enforcement of this ordinance. Petitioner, given the shape of the subject property, the maximum setback makes it practically difficult in developing the property. The site cannot accommodate a car wash that confirms to the UDO without the variance. Staff believes the B2 district is the optimal zoning designation for the property to conform to the village's comprehensive plan, and a car wash is permitted in the B2 district. However, it cannot be reasonably developed as a car wash without the requested variance setback. Four, the proposed variation is necessary due to the unique physical attributes of the property, which were not deliberately created by the applicant. Petitioner, the access requirements to the site dictated on the site plan, the building cannot be moved closer to Orchard Road. Staff concurs that the parcel shape and location makes conforming to the setback requirements impractical for a car wash use. Five, the proposed variation represents the minimum deviation of the regulations of this ordinance necessary to accomplish the desired improvement of the property. It's the petitioner's belief that the variation represents a minimum deviation from the regulation of the UDO. Staff agrees that the variation is a minimum deviation of the UDO. Six, the proposed variation is consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan, this ordinance, and other land use policies of the village. It's the petitioner's belief that the variation is consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan and the UDO. Staff believes the variation is consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan and the UDO. Commissioners, any comments, questions on these findings of fact? For the variation? No comments or questions? I'll look for a motion to include the four conditions.
Were we gonna add the privacy fence?
It's five.
For five, yeah.
This is for a vari... For a variation, you wanna edit? Okay, you can edit.
I mean, okay.
You can.
Yeah, the, the only question I would have is, right now, I, from what I'm hearing is that the, the fence would probably be on the outside edge of the lot, and it would abut those other properties. So, what they've seen so far is that what they're, the view outside their backyard is going to be vegetation, and just a blank wall might not be as agreeable to them. That would be the only thing that I can add.
It's also something we can note to the village board, too, and see how they want to handle it.
Thanks. So, again, with the four conditions for the variation.
All right, I'll, I'll motion for the approval of PZC 2024-0011 for the variation with the following conditions. Access must be provided to and from US Route 30. Final landscaping plan approval, village engineer approval of the final engineering plans, and the fire district approval.
I second.
Motion a second, please call the roll.
Vice Chairman Yin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bond?
Yes.
Commissioner Yekitis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ott?
Yes.
Chairman Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Baum?
Yes.
Commissioner McNeil James?
Yes.
And this item will be forwarded onto the village board next week, Monday, February 10th. Thank you.
Actually, for this particular item, we'll be taking it to the second meeting in February for its first reading, so that we can include the annexation agreement and have those all considered by the village board at the same time.
What date is that?
That will be February 24th.
Okay, great.
Can I ask a question? When do we note the opening hours, like we talked about?
We will put that in our report to the village board as part of your discussion, so they can take that under consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is PZC 2025-002, Village of Montgomery Receiving Station. Director Ray?
Yes, so, we have, before you, a special use and a variance for a water receiving station. This one is located at Hill Avenue, so it will be located on the parcel that is directly, well, pretty much directly north of the Ogden Hill Water Tower that's there at Goodwin and Hill Avenue. As you know, the Village of Montgomery has chose to move towards transitioning to Lake Michigan water. As part of that project, we will need to install two receiving stations. The first one being the one here at the Hill Avenue location. We have the one for, on the west side of town, which will be the next public hearing on tonight's meeting. So, as we're going through this process, utilities, including water receiving stations, do require a special use. So, we are requesting the special use for this, on this property. This is a property that's been owned by the village for several years and has been always meant for municipal purposes. So, we feel like this is consistent with that. We need the height variance. We're still working through final engineering, so at this point, we haven't finalized exactly what type of stand pipe or groundwater station would be needed in order to store the water that comes in through the receiving station. So, at a maximum, we'd be looking at 150 feet in height. Obviously, this is a residentially zoned property, so the maximum height is two stories, or two and a half stories. So, a variance is needed for that. So, Engineer Ott is here, that can answer any additional questions that you may have. But we do have in here, that is a part of it, because this is something that is still being designed, and we don't know exactly when construction will start. But we do know it won't be starting within a year, as we're still going through the designing phase with the DuPage Water Commission, that we will require an extension. You know, we had similarly talked about this with a special use for the one property in northeast corner of Awka and Orchard. So, similarly, since we will not be beginning construction with a year, we're asking for a five-year period before the special use and variance would expire.
I'll open up the public hearing on the special use. Okay. I will go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to findings of fact. The proposed special use will not endanger the health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the public. The special use proposed on the subject property will not endanger the health, safety, comfort, convenience, general welfare of the public. Allowing for the construction of the utility facilities is in the public interest as it will ensure a sustainable public water source. Two, the proposed special use is compatible with the character of adjacent properties and other properties within immediate vicinity of the proposed special use. The proposed special use is compatible with the character of adjacent properties. Three, the proposed special use will not impede normal and orderly development and improvement of adjacent properties and other properties within the immediate vicinity of the proposed special use. The proposed special use will not impede the normal orderly development and improvements of adjacent properties. Four, the proposed special use will not require utilities, access roads, drainage, and/or facilities or services to a degree disproportionate to that normally expected of permitted uses in the district, nor generate disproportionate demand for new services or facilities in such a way as to place undue burdens upon existing development in the area. The proposed development will provide adequate utilities, access road, drainage, et cetera, and the proposed special use will not place an undue burden on existing development. Five, the proposed special use is consistent with the comprehensive plan, this ordinance, other land use policies of the village. The proposed special use is consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan, which designates a property as a single-family detached residential. The special use will allow the village to provide utility services throughout the village. Commissioners, any comments or questions? If not, I'll look for a motion on the special use.
Our staff report, we do have three conditions. Approval of a final landscape plan, approval of a final site plan, as well as village engineer approval of the final engineering plans.
How tall is 150, is it? How tall is the water tower?
The, the existing water tower, there's approximately 150 to 155 feet, depending on, you know, the handrail, the handrail and everything that's up there. So, we're seeking something close to that. I do think it'll end up being less than that, the, the variance. But at this point, we have not designed exactly what we're using, whether it be a stand pipe and/or a ground storage tank, nor the size of that. Right now, we're looking at a million to a million and a half gallons, but that's still up in the air. So, that's why we, we know it won't be taller than the tower that's there.
Thanks.
This is for the special use, the variation comes.
Yeah, I was just curious on the height.
Look for motion.
Yeah, I guess I'll motion. A motion for approval of PZC 2025-002, Village of Montgomery Receiving Station for the special use with the following conditions. Approval of the final landscaping plan, approval of the final site plan, and village engineer approval of the final engineering plans.
Second. Motion a second, please call the roll.
I'm sorry, who was second? Who's second?
Mike.
Commissioner Yin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ba... Commissioner Baum?
Yes.
Commissioner Yekitis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ott?
Yes.
Chairman Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Baum?
Yes.
Commissioner McNeil James?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the consideration of a variance on PZC 2025-002, number two. I will go through the findings of, oh, yeah, public hearing. I'll open the public hearing.
Big crowd.
Yeah, no comments. I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And go through the findings of fact. The proposed variation will not endanger the health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the public. The proposed variation will not endanger the health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the public. The proposed variation is compatible with adjacent properties and other properties within the immediate vicinity of the proposed variation. The proposed variation is compatible with the character of adjacent properties within the immediate vicinity of the proposed variation. The new receiving station will be located adjacent to the existing water tower and along major arterial roads. Landscape screening in accordance with the UDO will be provided to screen the use from the adjacent residential as well as the roadway. Extending the timeframe for establishing these elements will allow the village to ensure that quality utility services are provided to the public. Three, the proposed variation alleviates an undue hardship created by the literal enforcement of this ordinance. Utilities are a essential, essential part of any zoning district, but the UDO's bulk regulations for the district are primarily intended to address residential structures. Additionally, extending the timeline for establishing these entitlements will allow the village to effectively collaborate with DWC and neighboring communities pursuing alternative water sources. Four, the proposed variation is necessary due to the unique physical attributes of the property, which were not deliberately created by the applicant. The need for a variance is necessary since the proposed use is not typically considered residential use. The property was dedicated to the village for stormwater and other municipal purposes as part of the development of Ogden Hill and Marquee Point. The variance is necessary to allow orderly development of water infrastructure within the village. Five, the proposed variation represents the minimum deviation of regulations of this ordinance necessary to accomplish the desired improvements of the property. The variation is the minimum deviation of the UDO. Six, the proposed variation is consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan, this ordinance, and other land use policies of the village. The variation is consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan and the UDO. Commissioners, comments or questions? If not, I'll look for a motion with the...
I would, I would move the recommendation of the staff to approve PZC 2025-003, Village of Montgomery Receiving Station, Galena Road, for a special use utility and variation with the three conditions. Approval of the final landscape plan, approval of the final site plan, and the village engineer approval of the final engineering plan.
I second.
Clarify the motion, this, we're still on item 002.
Did I jump the gun?
Yep.
Oops, I'll make it later.
Just save it.
If it's at the right time.
We just went through number two, we haven't run three yet.
Okay, let me know when it's time for you to make a motion.
You do a motion for two, two dot two?
Two dot two is what we're looking at.
So, we did the special use.
This is the variation.
And then this is the variation, so.
We're picking two votes for this item. Anybody else?
One thing for the five-year extension, is it only on the variation? Or was I supposed to do it on the special use as well?
It's part of the variations, and it applies to the special use and the variations.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss it the first time. Why don't I finish this one off, then? I'll, motion for the approval of PZC 2025-002, Village of Montgomery Receiving Station, Hill Avenue, for the variation of height and a five-year extension for the establishing, the entitlements identified herein with the following conditions. Approval of the final landscaping plan, two, approval of the final site plan, and three, village engineer approval of the final engineering plans.
Second.
Okay, motion a second, please call the roll.
Vice Chairman Yin?
Yes.
Commissioner Baum?
Yes.
Commissioner Yekitis?
Yes.
Commissioner Ott? Chairman Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Baum?
Yes.
Commissioner McNeil James?
All up under two. Um, yes.
Thank you.
And then that will cover three, and then the first one.
There you go.
Okay, moving on. Two C, PZC 2025-003. Montgomery Receiving Station, Galena Road.
Alrighty, second, first, same as the first. So, this is also a receiving station. This one will be located on the west side of town. This is on Galena Road, next to the fire station number three that's over there at the end of Galena. This land was dedicated to the village, so it has been intended for village purposes. Again, this one is zone B1M1. Again, this one is zone B1M1. Utilities are still a special use in those instances, so we are still in need of a special use for this, as well as the height variances, the maximum height in the M1 district is, I believe, 65 feet. It's, getting a lot of feedback here. It is, I believe, I'm forgetting now, 50 feet in the B1 district. So either way we look at it, it requires the height variation. So we are looking for approval of that, and we do have the same conditions as we have for the Hill Avenue one. And similarly, since construction would happen all around the same time, we are looking for the extension of the entitlements for that five years to 2030.
Great, thank you. At this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Or the special use. No one online. I will go ahead and close the public hearing, go through the findings of fact. I could just record it and use it for both. The proposed special use will not. The proposed special use will not endanger the health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the public. The special use proposed on the subject property will not endanger the health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the public. Two, this proposed special use is compatible with the character of adjacent properties and other properties within the immediate vicinity of the proposed special use. The proposed special use is compatible with the character of adjacent properties allowing for the construction of utility facilities in the public interest as it will ensure a sustainable quality of public water source. Three, the proposed special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of adjacent properties and other properties within the immediate vicinity of the proposed special use. The land surrounding the subject property is intended to be developed with industrial commercial uses. The proposed special use will not impede the normal orderly development and improvement of adjacent properties. Four, the proposed special use will not require utilities, access road, drainage, or other facilities or services to a dis, to a degree disproportionate to that normally expected or permitted uses in the district, nor generate disproportionate demand for new facilities or services in such a way as to place undue burdens upon existing development in the area. The proposed special use will provide adequate utilities, access road, drainage, et cetera, and the proposed special use will not place undue burden on existing development. Five, the proposed special use is consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan, this ordinance, and other land use policies of the village. Commissioners, any discussion on the special use? If not, I'll look for a motion on PZC 2025.
Is your turn.
003, number one.
My turn?
And then this motion is just for the special use, and we'll do the variation next.
Oh, boy. Is it this part here, then?
Yes. You know, I got the number three, but.
Right.
Well, if I got it right, I would make a motion that we approve PZC 2025-003, Village of Montgomery Receiving Station, Galena, for a special use utility and variation of height.
Skip the variation for now, so just the special use for utility.
Period.
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 With the following.
With the following conditions: Approval of the final landscape plan, approval of the final site plan, and the village engineer approval of the final engineering plan.
There you go.
I will second.
I second.
Who's second?
I second. Ms. Baum?
Okay, I have a motion of second, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baum?
Baum? Yes.
Commissioner McNeil James?
Yes.
Commissioner Yin?
Yes.
Commissioner Baum?
Yes.
Commissioner Kaitis? Commissioner Ott? Chairman Hammond?
Yes.
I didn't know it.
So moving on to 2025-003, number two, public hearing and consideration of a variance. I will go ahead right to the findings of fact. Oh, public hearing. Over here, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. The proposed variation will not endanger the health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the public. The proposed variation will not endanger the health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the public. Two, the proposed variation is compatible with the character of adjacent properties and other properties within the immediate vicinity of proposed variation. The proposed variation is compatible with the character of adjacent properties and other properties within the immediate vicinity of the proposed variation. Landscaping, screening, in accordance with the UDO will be provided to screen the use from the adjacent roadway. Extending the timeframe for establishing these entitlements will allow the village to ensure that quality utility services are provided to the public. Three, the proposed variation alleviates an undue hardship created by literal enforcement of this ordinance. Utilities are a essential part of any zoning district, but the UDO's bulk regulations for the district are primarily intended to address structures used for manufacturing, do not require heights above 100 feet. Additionally, extending the timeframe for establishing these entitlements will allow the village to effectively collaborate with DWC and the neighboring communities pursuing the alternative water source. Four, the proposed variation is necessary due to the unique physical attributes of the property which were not deliberately created by the applicant. The need for a variation is necessary to allow for orderly development of water infrastructure in the village. While commercial and industrial use is typically taller structures than residential, they are not typically exceeding 100 feet in height. The subject property, while zoning B1M1, was designated to be for municipal purposes as part of the annexation agreement and development agreement for the county property. Five, the proposed variation represents the minimum deviation of the regulations of this ordinance necessary to accomplish the desired improvement of the property. The variation is a minimum deviation of the UDO. Six, the proposed variation is consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan, this ordinance, and other land use policies of the village. The variation is consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan and the UDO. Commissioners, any comments or questions on the variation? If not, I will go ahead and look for a motion for the variation.
I move the approval of PZC 2025-003, Montgomery Receiving Station at Galena Road for the variation of height and a five-year extension for establishing the entitlements identified herein with the following conditions: Approval of the final landscape plan, approval of the sign, final site plan, village engineer approval of the final engineering plans.
I second.
Have a motion of second, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baum?
Yes.
Commissioner Kaitis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Ott?
Yes.
Chairman Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Baum?
Yes.
Commissioner McNeil James?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Yin?
Yes.
Okay, number seven, community development update, new business.
Yes, so a few updates. Cases that were before you last month were both approved by the village board in relation to the extension of the entitlements. The village board decided to go the route of no expiration date, but tying it specifically to the approved site plan and landscape plans. So that was approved in January, as well as the special use and variations for the Pico pallets there at 1,000 now. So those both were approved. We don't really have any updates on the one item, as they are not going to probably be building for a few years now. But the other one has already contacted the building department and is working on getting their permits for the improvements they need to do inside the building, so that is moving forward quickly. Also wanted to let you know that we did issue the temporary certificate of occupancy for Ravago. So they have begun moving some product and equipment in. They will be operating their shipping-receiving offices at a limited capacity as they finish getting the rest of the machinery and stuff in. They hope to be fully operational by the end of April, so that is an exciting move. We have received another application in for, for a property that is under review. We're hopeful that it will be on next month's agenda, but depending on how detailed the review comments are, it might not be on until April. So there is potential for a meeting next month. I also wanted to let you know that there is an opportunity for some training through the Illinois chapter of the APA. They're offering a webinar on findings of fact and the importance of findings of fact. That's going to be on February, no, that was the first one, second one. So it'll be on February 20th at 7:00 PM. It is a virtual one. So if you guys are interested, I can forward you this, and you can let me know if you are interested in going. If there's enough people, I can see about getting a group rate, and we can host it here, and we can all just attend it together. We would just need to post that as an open meeting if we decide to go that route. If there's only one or two of you that are interested in going, the village can still pay for that for you, and, but you can just join from home. So I will get that out after the meeting tonight, so you guys can take a look at it and just let me know as soon as possible, so I can get us RSVP'd if we do need to go for the group rate. Okay? And other than that, I don't think I have any other updates. Tony, you have anything to add? No? Okay.
Anything for commissioners? All right. Next meeting is March 6, 2025. We're adjourned.
You're a trooper.
My god. I'm glad I had my voice today.
Zoning, variances, special uses. All we needed was a plan unit development.
I know.
You had to keel over, man.
Covered all the basics, Mark.